I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Leader.
Yep.
Bob Breck.
Here.
Mel Edinger.
Here.
Kristoff Booth.
Betty Neese.
Here.
Wally Stavon.
Here.
Larry McRitchell.
Here.
We're in session. Approval of the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
Motion made by Wally, second by Larry to approve the agenda as printed, circulated. Any questions or correction of the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose motion carried. Approval of the minutes of October 27, 2014, regular council, and of November 10, 2014, special council, city council.
I'm up to approve.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kerry, second by Bob, to approve these two dates. Any questions or correction? Hearing none, all in favor, that motion say aye.
Aye.
Pose motion carried. Public appearance, nothing at this time, citizen input at this time, guests, nothing at this time. Item number six from the consent agenda, item six, A, B, C, and D, one.
Move to approve collectively.
Second. Motion made by Kerry, second by Larry to approve from the consent agenda, item six, A, B, C, D, and one. Is there any other questions or corrections of it at this time? Hearing none, we have poll vote of the council.
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Approval of appointments on this Tamara Halmann, she was not a resident of the city, so we have to poll her name. So, sorry, but she was really energetic.
We realized that. She's a business owner.
Yeah.
Oh, she's one of the part of that meeting, that one?
No, she is, um, she's the owner of Pop Scotch Coffee Shop on Main Street. So, the search continues.
So, if you guys hear of anybody?
Yeah.
See if you could brainwash them to come.
Is that how we're doing it now?
Yeah, you gotta brainwash. I tried that today, I got one lady, I think, for the, for running housing.
All right.
She said she's scared, I said, well, she'd be in the mirror one time and talk about being scared. Police department?
I definitely knew her report from my.
Okay, anything for the chief, anybody got any more questions you want her out or what? None.
Did you get any more information on the townhouse?
Kirk will, on the, you mean the mechanic report that you were working on?
The expenses?
Yes, Kirk will have it ready for you when he gets back from Deer Hunter.
Oh, okay.
So, you'll have it for the first meeting of December.
Okay.
We'll have it all put together.
Thank you, chief.
Yep.
Parker and Rex, nothing here, library, nothing. Committee, Cheryl, you have anything to add today?
Um, just, I want to point out in the report that, um, that CDPG grant that's for housing for low income, for they can also get for purchasing homes, first-time homes, but the one for fixing up their homes, it's a good thing for us to let citizens know because the lateral, it may be able to help offset the costs of their laterals that they're required to get as they're, we're doing more and more of the improvements. So, that's something that if you know someone who's struggling, that maybe they, I'll help them do the paperwork they have to do it, but I'll sit with them and help them do it. And we should let people know that that's available.
So, that interest would be less than what the city is offering, because our interest is pretty involved to begin with.
But their interest lasts, goes out for a long period of time.
So, it would be the short five-year duration?
No, it could be a longer period of time. And what we would do is work with them and compare that, but it sounded like it was a good opportunity for them.
Okay.
Good to get out to the public. Those of them, those of later on and all that work, sort of work.
Yeah, and there's no guarantee, but each person will be individually assessed by, I think that would go through Brown County in a partnership with the CDPG grant, but we would help them do the paperwork, because I, I heard there's a lot of paperwork involved.
Could we do something like a letter to the editor, because that way we're not paying for the article?
We could put a quarterly newsletter that's going out. That's a good idea.
I, I think that would, that's a very good piece of information we have, Cheryl, because when we continue with our eye and eye, I mean, and maybe you would possibly come to our meetings for the next group, you know, and explain that to them, then maybe that would help us out a lot, you know, so, that'd be a good move. And maybe with the present people of our five-year plan now, would I, maybe that's something that we should distribute it to these people now.
So, they're saying to get it out in the public so they're aware of it so they can answer the question.
Yeah, get it out now, or maybe we could, maybe, I mean, I don't know how much it entails, maybe we can send something out to the owners in our, in our streets that we're going to be doing the next couple of years, huh?
Well, if we put in a quarterly newsletter, they'll all get it.
It goes to all of them.
Okay, that's fine.
But, I don't know, Cheryl, if you remember what, I mean, that money is available now.
It's available, yes. I think over the next year, but if they don't use the money, they won't get their next round of money. So, actually, we can make it known to people, so it's, it's, the money comes in every year or every two years, because it's federal money or state money, I think it's just federal.
Right.
That's CDPG. And, um, so, but they have to spend what they're trying to get rid of now, so they can get their additional funds.
For the next cycle.
So, we, we get the information out and just be available to people till the money runs out.
So, when is now?
Now is like today.
Today, I mean.
Yeah, we just found this out a week or so, a couple of weeks ago, that this was available. We asked the question when we met with the county, and because they were talking, they can put wells in, so we asked the question, can they also, would it also pay for laterals? And, um, they got back to us and said, yes, it is possible, they have to meet all requirements, but it is possible.
And if they get the money now, because seeing this project's not being done until next year, you know, in the summer, will that matter?
What, they have to have the, um.
Paperwork in by a certain time?
They have to have the paperwork in, and then we would have to talk to the CDPG grant coordinator to see if, they do a lot, some, it's not like an incremental, so it would actually help the city get their money upfront, and then, um, over time, they pay back.
And.
And we'll double check to see what the interest, but I thought the interest was actually lower than what the city was.
Yeah, I think it might have been, but we'll do some work.
I think we should get it to all those people that are involved with lateral issues, do it now.
Let me do a little, I'll do a little bit more of work so I have all the details, because once the calls come in, I want to make sure that we have all the answers, but it is something that's.
And then just maybe send a notice over to them, say, this is available, if you want to talk.
Well, yeah, just let them know that this is another option, and if, any questions call or something.
Yeah, we'll work on that, and, um, like Cheryl said, she can put together all, get all the details before we go too public with it, but, um, we just recently found that out by our visit with Dean of Moody at the county, so, it was positive. Had we not gone down there, we may not ever know, you know.
Well, I think that's why it's so important that we have, you know, staff going to these meetings and bring it back, that really is a help for all of us, you know, I mean, even you guys, if you want to go some, please let us know, we'll send you.
And they do have monies they're trying to use up too for first-time homeowners that are low-income, so, that's a different grant, but it's monies they've got out there, they're really trying to encourage people to start looking at buying homes, so.
That'd be valuable information to our, to the companies and brilliant that show homes and are selling homes.
Uh, is there any other questions, Cheryl? Thank you, Cheryl, very much. Fire department, um, Lori, this is for you more or less, because Rich ain't here. Did they finish their, their policy change that we asked for over almost a year now?
No.
So, do you have any idea where we are with that?
I will check with the lease change, or the fire change.
Yeah, I would kind of drop, somebody dropping a ball here, that's supposed to have been done a long time ago.
Joey DiRosa's in charge.
Yeah. Um, it's, uh, 7:10, we have a public hearing for the 2015 budget. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing, uh, is anybody for or against the 2015 budget? Is anybody for or against the 2015 budget? Last call, anybody for or against the 2015 budget? Hearing none, against, we will close the public hearing. Community reports, planning commission, uh, I think we have nothing at this time. Cheryl is working with the planning commission to incorporate, uh, between the RDA and the planning commission for future, um, how would we say that, Cheryl?
To be proactive in the city planning instead of reactive?
Yeah.
Or less reactive, more proactive?
Yeah, I, I think we're going to gain some benefit on that, I think we're going to go a long ways with that, and, um, I think that'd be a pretty good deal. Parker Recreation Commission report, Bob, you got anything on your meeting that's coming up, anything you'd see what they're trying to do?
Well, they're slowly working on the pool, that's the thing, no.
Yeah, is there any other thing that they talk about doing in the future, or something on their agenda?
No.
Okay, thank you. Library board, Betty, you got anything that is earth-shattering?
I didn't make the last meeting, but I think there was too much, the minting tree's going.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item D, Utility Commission, well, number five, engineering fee contract amendment, Amy, if you would like to, oh, you're up there, oh my God, she's right up there, huh?
She wants to get back.
Oh, watch it, oh. In your, in your topic summary, uh, we'll let Amy, you know, clarify the things that's in there, you guys can ask the questions.
Okay, the first thing was, um, with regards to the engineering fee contract amendment, uh, there was a letter in your packet, um, where we had, uh, given, um, our proposal originally for a $12,000 fee, estimating about six hours of each time to be spent on the project, um, which we realized was a, a little bit short, and also the project has extended on longer than we anticipated, um, and we gave an example of, uh, one time where, uh, we spent at least 13 hours, I think it was, uh, on-site, just for the startup of the pump, and then there was, uh, extra time when the tie-in was being made at, uh, well number three, uh, we were out there a whole day on that, that's just some examples, um, and we have asked that consideration be given for, uh, additional fee of $5,500 for our time spent on site. If there's any questions on that?
Is any of this due to the well drillers problems that we had?
No.
Now, this relates to that at all, spending extra time there because of their issues?
Right, no.
Yeah, this is on the pump house.
Right.
Quickly to pump house, nothing to do.
This one over here, on Water Street, right?
Right.
Well, it's, yeah, it's related to the new pump house, pump house number five, and also the work that's being done at well number three and the main street pump house, so we're actually managing work at three different sites, um, and we did review this with the utility commission, and they have recommended to city council that this be approved.
The 18, the 18-year period would be something that would, because they said approximately the election has gone longer, and that would have been part of the issue.
We have the motion on?
I'll make a motion that we approve the payment of $5,500.
I'll second that.
The motion made by Wally and second by Bob to approve the contract amendment for engineering fees to the McMahon in the amount of $5,500. Is there any other discussion or questions on this motion?
I want to make sure it's additional.
Additional?
Yes.
Additional, yeah.
That's just for their time being at the site.
Yes, yeah, okay.
Do you want to come back to that?
I couldn't work through that.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have poll vote of the council.
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yep.
Kerry?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Item number two, move to approve the change order number three to RGM Construction LLC in the amount of $3,441.24.
Uh, this was also included in your packet and reviewed with the utility commission at their last meeting, and they are recommending to council that this be approved. Um, this included five items, one of them was a deduct for natural colored block at well number five. I would like to clarify that item number 3.3, which was, uh, related to additional floor slab cutting, that was at well number three. Um, I can't remember if we spoke with this group, but when they opened up the floor slab, was found that underneath the slab at well number three, there was an additional concrete slab underneath the slab, 22 inches of concrete underneath the slab was encountered. Um, you may recall that we also encountered, this was some time ago, some conduit underneath that slab, which was unexpected, unexpected, so we found more problems there. So, I wanted to clarify that this happened at the well number three pump house, it wasn't at well number five, something that we designed and then caused problems again, so I wanted to clarify that, uh, that was the problem there. Are there any questions on the items?
Well, that was all the stuff, not that, was any blueprints?
Right.
Right, yeah. It wasn't shown on a blueprint, so we didn't know until we opened it up and.
I already have another slab underneath the slab, that is weird.
For how many years was that way up? Long time, huh?
Probably building that building though.
I think in the 60s that, almost.
When was that?
I think in the 60s.
The 60s?
Is that where they had their places?
That's just like the bank when they wanted to replace their drain, uh, their sewer pipe, they found a basement underneath the basement.
That's kind of what this was. I think it was actually even 16 inches below the floor, too.
I know, but that's what the bank ran into. Okay, is any other discussion from Amy, who make a move to approve?
I'll make a motion to, uh, to approve the change order number three, amount of $3,441.24.
I'll second.
Motion made by Wally and second by Kerry, move to approve change order number three to RGM Construction Company LLC in the amount of $3,441.24. Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, we have poll vote of the council.
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Kerry? Yes.
That motion is carried.
I just wanted to mention a couple of things on the update that I believe was also included in your packet. They are still working on getting safe samples from the transmission main, um, so far, we've only heard that they have taken one sample, and that came back unsafe, which is not all that uncommon or that big a deal, they still need to continue working on that. There are still some issues with getting the fiber optic cable pulled through the conduit, and we're still continuing to work on them with that. Deer season is kind of delayed getting responses, and so, things have been kind of put on hold. Um, I know my colleague Jeff said, um, we do not anticipate well number five going into service before the end of December. Once we get the fiber optic cable installed, it's going to be at least three weeks before the well would be up and running, so, I'm thinking the end of December is not looking very good.
What is the big problem with this fiber optic cable?
They can't get it through the.
They can't get it.
That's a big tube.
It's two-inch.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And a fiber optic cable is probably smaller, but.
I want to say a quarter inch or something, but, yeah.
Damn.
Yeah.
Hopefully, they don't have to dig that sucker up.
Not the whole thing.
Well, they'll find out where it is, they know how to do that, I bet myself.
Yeah.
But I was wondering why they didn't put the pipes into it, well number three, or get them inside the building anyhow, because they're just hanging out there in the air.
Right, yeah. So, those are the two major issues, everything else is pretty much taken care of, but there's some things that can't happen until those two things are taken care of, so, that's where we stand right now.
Any other question, discussion, of Amy? Okay, thank Amy very much for your report.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
I don't think it's your fault.
Um, item E, we did redevelopment authority commission, um, Mel, you have anything on there today?
Not really, just need some new members, we didn't meet last month, kind of, had a meeting together, but didn't have a core of, so.
Yeah, I, I, I kicked that around, we have to find a position for, um, Gayart's position and, um, redevelopment authority.
Kerry, Kerry was going to turn us, I think she was going to run meeting, and it doesn't work.
Yeah, Kerry.
It just doesn't work for her schedule.
Yeah, I, I don't know, I don't know what campaign we, we have to get to, get people to get involved in our city, I'm, I'm just at odds, of course, we're not unusual with it, um, I guess it's the same thing I hear when I go to other meetings, talk to other.
Can we combine some of these together? These committees are.
Well, I think that's Lori and Joy, we have to set a talk about that.
Cherry, you know.
I think we're going to have to, okay, something, Amy?
We could put something up quarterly newsletter saying we're looking.
Oh, we can do that again.
Yeah, we talked about putting something on the website too, just to, on the front page, encourage people to maybe consider.
Are we managed by ordinance as to how many members we should have?
Yes.
Yes.
And how many?
And I, eleven, I think the redevelopment authority is a statutory requirement to.
So, the housing authority?
Point that, yes.
Can't change it.
Yeah, because Cheryl and I, today, seven it is, yeah, we talked about, well, I said, I know it's, it was adopted by the council by a resolution to develop the redevelopment authority or create the redevelopment authority, and that is dictated by statute.
I think ours is six. The housing authority, I think it's six.
Yeah, that's another one that's dictated by statute.
Oh, you've always been under.
Yeah, it, it, it's getting tough. Uh, one person I spoke to today about getting on the, you know, the housing authority, is some people are very, very uncomfortable with, you know, what they have to do, they think they're going to be, you know, the leaders, or they're going to do this, and try to explain this one person, they said, that's all, we need somebody to say yes and no, it's just more or less to watch the budget, watch the monies, that's all it is, you know, extra eyes, you know, well, then maybe I'll do that.
No, we have three people that can explain anything, they got Marlowe this once in a while there.
Yeah.
And Tanny is really getting to know it now.
Yeah.
And then you got what's going over there, Garvila, that she knows her job really well.
Yeah.
So, we really don't have to have any knowledge.
Well, I, I don't think you'll never completely understand all the, all the meetings I did and you did, it just.
Gaylor was about the only one that had it, her and Don Pat, Gaylor that.
Gaylor, yeah.
Yeah, Don Pat.
Okay, uh, from the committee of the hall, we have the ordinance, municipal court, uh, we went from a catch-up on, um, 2009 to, or, excuse me, two years to four years now.
Who's approved the ordinance that?
You're setting a public hearing.
Oh, I can't do that, oh.
I'll move to set a public hearing for Monday, December 22nd at 7:10 for the adoption of the proposed ordinance.
I'll second.
Motion made by Kerry and second by Mel to set a public hearing on the ordinance for the municipal court. Uh, is any other question or discussion on this? Hearing none, we have.
I'll vote.
All in favor, that motion say aye?
Aye.
Pose motion Kerry. Uh, item number two, case wheel loader, lease agreement, uh, we discussed that, um, take action on that, please.
Move to approve the case load, wheel loader, or lease agreement.
I'll second that.
Motion made by Wally, a, a motion made by Larry, second by Wally to approve the case wheel loader lease agreement, um, is there any other questions or discussion on this?
It's a five-year agreement?
Yes.
Five years.
Do we have a termination clause, where if we determine after one year, it's not beneficial, we're locked into the five year?
I guess I never asked then.
Yeah, that would have been a good question for Mel.
Funny, I got was, yeah, every year we'd have to do the re-lease, re, do it.
Then we get a new piece of equipment every year.
We get a new piece of equipment every year.
We do get a new piece of equipment every year.
But I think it's a five-year lease. I think it's a five-year lease. All set up.
Yeah, I think that's what he said, yeah.
Yeah. Well, he did say he could take it after six months, too, if he had somewhere hard to go. And then he'd see the equipment anyway, so. It sounded like, you know, he's willing to work with us, um, as much as we are with him, I guess.
Any other discussion on this?
Just like that.
Hearing none, we have poll vote of the council.
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Kerry?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Cemetery commission, anything, Kerry, okay, thank you.
Under, under old business resolution 2015 budget, Lori?
They just need a motion on the resolution.
Okay.
I'll move to adopt resolution, R1408, adopting the 2015 budget.
Second.
Motion made by, um, Mel, and second by Betty to approve the resolution for the 2015 budget. Any questions or corrections at this time?
On your desk, I did give you what's called a tip calculation, that's how we calculate the, uh, the tax rate and the tax increment that we'll be receiving, and you'll see the mill rate after the school levy tax credit is applied, the final mill rate is $22.12 per thousand assessed valuation compared to last year's, which was $22.17, so it's five cents less.
Wonder if it really went up as the school.
Right, yeah.
Fox Valley went down quite a bit.
Yeah.
A hundred and thirty-six thousand, a hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-four cents.
Yeah, that's, that's, that was a benefit, that was very helpful for the.
It's too bad we couldn't have got that.
Ocomedia.
I don't know.
Mr., our governor wanted to do that to give some tax relief to the, to the property tax owners, that's why he did that.
Oh, that's where it is. That's where we thought it was going to be.
That's where, we were trying to figure it out, that's what it is.
That's where it is, okay, that makes sense.
I know a lot of us, last time we had a meeting down there, we, we didn't know where he was going to do that, but we tried to give it so he would give back some of the money back to the cities that they did do it. You know, just leave it alone, and then, but, but now our fees are going to go right through the roof.
Any other discussion on this?
Yeah.
Hearing none, we have poll vote of the council?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
I was, went through there, and there was several items I didn't see, like, for our, for our garage, like, I didn't see anything for grass pickup, I didn't see anything for branches pickup, you know, for the light, light on budget for that, I didn't see that.
Sure.
I saw it for leaf, and I went through three or four times, and I couldn't find it.
Why don't you step in and see me tomorrow, Larry, I'll.
That's probably under compost.
Yeah, it's under compost.
Oh, it's under compost?
Yeah.
Yeah, because I seen it, I seen the leaf pick up.
Yep.
But I didn't see the others.
Yeah, it's, it's under compost.
And we had a lot of leaves this year.
Yeah, there's still some out there.
Should we pour them action?
Oh, I think so.
Oh, yeah.
Really.
They're not even cleaning them.
Oh, no, that, not, not, not the DPW's problem, I went around town, and the date was on the 14th, and people were putting leaves out there, so I come back, and I got all of Lori, and I got all the streets we were on, and she said, they're sending them a letter, you got to pull them off the street, put them in their basement, or wherever they want one.
I, uh. I think after tomorrow morning, they'll be pushed up on curb, and they'll be sitting there. And then they'll complain because they're under tariffs.
Well, I went home on a bicycle twice from this place, and it was good, it was pretty dark. I had my light on my bike. Everybody knows I got lights on my bike. And I come around the corner, two different corners, and I hit those leaves and lost it twice. It's dangerous. They shouldn't be out the street. And another thing I looked, I've been talking to some other cities. Yeah, it was kind of a soft landing. But I've been talking to other cities, and there, a lot of them are, got out of it. And if you want it done, you call. They'll come and get it. It's a U-bill. For lease, we... And I was looking into it, like I missed seeing the other stuff. Just leaf pickup is $6,958, okay? I figured for 25 hours, we'd take them to do that. You know they spent a lot more in 25 hours out there. Or 25 bucks an hour. I figured 25 bucks an hour is what they're getting. That comes out to 6.9 days. You know they're out there a lot longer than that, so where do they get that money from?
With all the equipment.
Yeah, with all that equipment. So, maybe, I think next year's budget, we should look into if they need to have it done, we're gonna have to charge it for it. For all the stuff, branches, leaves, the grass...
Curbside keeping.
And also the big, major stuff that we do with the big item pickup. I think maybe we gotta look into that. A lot of cities are going to that, because it's so hard to do anyhow, you know. Our city is pretty small, but you get some of the other places. They're starting to charge because their budgets is just whack out. You know, they spent a lot more in 6.9 hours out there, or 6.9 days.
Four days.
Yeah, and grass, too. I mean, all that stuff. I know people aren't gonna like it, but I don't think we could do that.
What do you mean grass? Well, they don't pick grass up. They're not supposed to put it with their leaves.
Well, that's in there.
Grass out.
I know, it gets put out there. It's not supposed to.
And it's being picked up by us. Yep. And it's being picked up by us. So, all those branches.
It's clear not to get the grass with the leaves.
Because all of them use a lot more.
You can't brag everything.
In my opinion, I had a house for 35 years, and what I did is I put an attachment on my lawnmower. It's called a mulcher. It mulched it all. It's a pretty fertilizer. It caused the mulcher blade cost me about $20. It's just a food for thought. Maybe we should look into it for next year.
Sure.
Well, we're gonna have to start looking at it, add a new idea.
Yeah, because we've got too many other things to take care of and maintain.
Well, like I said...
Well, we gotta, we gotta start doing, we can't take away all the services from the citizens.
I agree.
You know, we have to start, we have to start cutting back what, you know...
We have.
Areas that we can...
We have. We skirt ourselves.
Not the citizens.
Larry, you haven't gotten creative. There's a lot more areas that we can become more creative on.
Amy, because I talked to people that do the budgets, Dennis, Ann, Lyra, everybody, they don't know where to cut. Police Department, right? They don't know where to cut. There's no place to cut anymore. And I even looked, went line by line. They're scraping, it's creepy.
So, because they can't cut, we should cut the citizens? I don't...
We ain't cutting the citizens.
Yes, we are by charging them.
A citizen should be allowed to take care of themselves.
By charging.
You wouldn't have to charge them if they do it, take them down to the...
There's a lot of people that do it themselves.
I always do it myself.
I'd say three quarters of the city does it by themselves.
I don't, mine don't, but I know I have elderly neighbors, and it's just easier for them that way to do it. They like the fact that it's a good service for elderly people.
Well, I think that's something that should be the goal, that the council should, well, it's gonna happen. We should, I mean, we should start now looking, because actually, you know, it's already end of November, December, January, February, April, I mean, we ain't got much time. We're gonna be back at it again.
And we even looked into what we're gonna do with our employees, looking at different things to make, you know, they gotta pay a little more, so.
Yeah, okay. All right. Any other discussion on the budget?
I don't, I don't like to worry.
We have a poll vote at the council?
Bob?
Yes.
Mel?
Yes.
Betty?
Yep.
Wally?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Carrie?
Yes.
That motion is carried. Any new business? Next, a communication by city clerk administrator.
Um, you have my summary report in your packet. The one thing I did want to tell, kind of a segue off of what Larry was just talking about and the mayor. Met with our department heads last weekend, said just that, what are our goals and objectives for the next year? And we're gonna start discussing that more, and maybe after the spring election in April, when we got our new council on board, sit down, have a couple of workshops with you, just start talking about future goals for the next, 2016 budget and that. See where you want to head forward. So, levies will go to the Coney Treasure tomorrow. Tax bills will be printed probably the first, second week in December, mailed directly from the Coney Treasures office. And then Joy and I get busy.
And Pam.
And Pam, yes.
And Cheryl.
Fantastic, yeah. It'll get busy there.
Well, the doors will be locked before panel.
From my report, like you see in your packet, Lori and I attended the, and Mel, thank you, Mel, for coming.
And Cheryl.
And Cheryl. Hate to miss out anybody. The Water City Stormwater Plating Workshop, it's very interesting. I think we broke down to a smaller group now. I think there's only 14 or 15 of us that volunteered to keep this going. This is gonna be a project that might be six months, seven months, eight months. We're not sure how long this is gonna run, because you can only do so much. It's such a huge project, it might take many, many years for the Department of Natural Resources to change their ordinances or the way they think, and what we need to do. Maybe we need to do something a little bit different in the properties that we own for water runoff. And as we know, we're gonna be contributing more water into our system with our I and I. The more we tighten up our water, the more water's going into that marsh. And so, we're gonna add to that problem as time goes on, something like that.
The blasting may or may not...
Blasting, all depends on the dollars. I was a little disappointed in that.
I was, too.
Well, no, we're not, they're talking about, they're trying to squeeze us with some more dollars, I would believe. That's my interpretation. But they're not gonna squeeze us anymore, because we already squeezed $50,000, right? For the survey. We done it, and they're gonna have to go around the surrounding areas and scrape up a few bucks from them people. But, you know, I think what Dee and I really wants us to do is put the whole bill, because they want it for their own pet projects, you know, and so... Yeah, well, so, we'll see, we'll see in the next several, we'll see in the next several months what's going on.
It sounded like they had some avenues for some funds, though.
They got the right people. Boy, I've never seen people like that. Holy mackerel, there's money there, but we, they know how to get it. You know, Cheryl, you feel that way from the people there?
Yes.
They can get the monies?
I think they'd beg our team.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would agree.
And my last thing. I'm gonna run for mayor again. So, I was, I really was thinking of not running, but then there's somebody in here that's kind of twisted my arm a little bit.
What else would you do with yourself, Matt?
I would sit home and cause trouble with my wife. Just another day.
Domestic disturbance of the mayor.
Wayne doesn't want to come to your house.
I would say domestic disturbance of the mayor.
No, I, the reason why I did, because, you know, like I said, I enjoy, I enjoy doing it. I don't know, like I said, I'm 67, and, you know, and...
You're just a puppy.
Well, that's fine.
They haven't popped yet.
Yeah, but...
So, is this the time we're gonna put on the Concost of the Vanessa?
No, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get an ordinance changed. All council members have to do that.
Oh, we're gonna be the...
Yeah, especially you. Well, anyways, I decided to run again, because I think there's so much here that we need, you know, that not that other people can do it, it just that, you know, it takes, being a mayor, for the first three years, you are totally zero. You have no clue of what's going on. The furbage is different, and, you know, and Lori and Joy can contest that, you know, you think you can do something, and they both look at you and say, "No, Mayor, you can't do that." Well, geez, I'm the mayor, but that's just too bad, you know. But, you know, and that's just the way it is, and it's very educational. I think we got a lot of potentials here in Brilliant, and I think, you know, I think in another three years, I could, you know, with us as a team effort, that we could all, you know, accomplish some more that we need to move the city on forward. It's gonna be difficult, you know, to do, but I'm willing to take that challenge, so. So, I'm gonna throw my hat for it. Thank you very much.
You're gonna get in trouble like Obama, right?
Huh? No, I'm very careful at that. Okay, press time? No? Oh, our buddy Andy, they're having a baby today, I believe.
C-section, yeah.
Pardon me?
C-section appointment today, yep.
Yeah, she's having it by c-section. He doesn't know what it is, but, so he's gonna take this week off. Yeah. Is there any more discussion, anything else anybody else want to bring up? Any other thing for next month's topics? Okay, y'all have a happy Thanksgiving. Enjoying with your family. Make adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by, Mel, seconded by Wally to adjourn. I hope you have a most say aye. Opposed motion carried by our adjourn. Thank you, everybody, for the meeting.